Three lots and I went in for fourteen hundred eight thirty.
Can you all hear me?
Uh, hey Kim.
Hey.
Can I hear you, Kim?
You can't hear me?
No, it's maybe it's my volume or is somebody else's volume? Let me see.
I'm turning mine up. Can you hear me now?
It's the, I think it's the volume here. Hold on a second.
Can you?
It's full volume though.
Is, is it me?
I have full volume here.
Okay, let me see if I need to switch microphones.
Kim, can you hear us? Can you give us a thumbs up if you hear us?
Is that any better?
It's the TV, sorry.
How about now, Kim?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
A call meeting that was um in attendance, we have uh Hyrum Peck, town planner, we had uh Lena, I almost say Zena, but it's Lena Frazier, uh CEO, we have Leslie Higgins Biddle, uh member, we have Tom Mabry, a member, we have Lauren Sardi, a member, and Alex Hutchinson, a member, and we have a guest today, Bob Wiedeman. Uh, and we also have, I'm sorry, Kim, we had Kim zooming in, so we, we have everybody present. What I'd like to do is just kick off real quickly, uh hopefully people have had a chance to review the minutes from our uh July seven meeting. And people give me an idea when they're ready to be there approved or not approved, that would be great.
You need a motion?
Yeah.
I'll move in the minutes from the July seventh meeting.
Okay, do I have a second? Tom, thank you. Uh, all of, all in favor of approving the minutes from our meeting by eyes? And if you weren't there, you can abstain. Any extensions? Okay, so we have the minute, uh the minutes approved, I'm gonna move immediately to our next agenda item, which is to welcome and thank Bob Wiedeman uh to come in and speak to us. I've had a chance to meet you a couple of times because you've come before plenty in zoning, uh working with the high end bank folks.
Yes.
So um why don't you introduce yourself a little bit and then we can kind of get into your discussion?
Yes, if you don't know me, um my name's Bob Wiedeman, I'm a builder developer, remodeler, I do a little bit of everything, I own some, some apartments, about seventy units now, um so I do a little bit of everything, I'm based out of work throughout the Wavine County and into a little bit into Middlesex County and then Iowa State. Uh, built a few houses here, about seven, seven hundred in total in my career, it spans forty, forty years or so. Um, been around a little while. Um, so that's just my background, I, I know a little bit of everything, I'm very active with the Home Builders Association, I'm their government affairs chairman for the last fifteen years, so I know a lot of law legislation as it's going through the process up in Hartford. And I'm also active on my, my local Wallingford um affordable housing group, kind of similar to what you guys are doing, that we're just looking at, a lot of the cogs are really pushing this whole whole activity um with the various towns, and I've spoken to, I think this is the fourth town I've talked with, they've been out in Guilford, Madison, Milford, thought to those folks about what they're trying to do. Um, and quite honestly, I think some of the stuff that they're dealing with in Guilford and Madison kind of translate well. They're dealing with the same thing, lack of infrastructure, um but wanting to create diversity of housing. Um, and primarily, not so much that we're trying to grow the town exponentially, but really trying to let people that grew up here continue to live here, whether it's kids go out to school and want to come back. Older folks that, you know, lived here their whole life, raised their family and now living in a big house that they can no longer either afford or need. And it would be nice to transition that to someone else that could afford and take care of it and well, allow them to stay in town where, you know, they, they've got friends and they've got, you know, relationships with businesses and religious things and you know, all those kinds of things that go along with why you want to stay in a particular town, so. We're all dealing with the exact same thing, so um I'm very open book, I'm happy to answer your questions, I, I don't want to just talk about stuff you don't want, you don't care about, so you guys ask questions, tell me what you want to know, I can give you, you know, my perspective, I'm a very small builder, um so I'm not going to talk to you about what it's going to be like to come in here and build, not that you want that, two hundred and fifty units, that's not what I do. Uh, you know, I build ten units.
Happen at two hundred.
Yeah, okay. But I, I do do a lot of um small projects, you know, my largest project in my whole career was sixty units, single family. But most of mine are anywhere from three lots to fifteen or twenty lots, that, that type of thing. Uh, so probably very similar to what you probably see here from development, there are those large parcels which is no, no longer around, it's hard to make the economics work because you can't get through them fast enough, and so the cost of carrying those kinds of projects just don't make a lot of sense. Um, I've also done a couple of eight thirty G projects recently, um mostly needing to do that because we can't get the density under the standard zoning regulations. Um, they were, they were more or less friendly, both um both that I have built now and are occupied rental. Um, um and it was, they were friendly, I have one that's currently also in Wallingford, um that was going to be single family for sale. And the town decided they didn't like the location of where I selected it, so they, they did turn me down and I'm under appeal through the courts. And my decision should be out sometime in September, so I'm just waiting for them to tell me I'm right, they're wrong, which I've been telling them for a year, but we will probably, more than likely, as most eight thirty G applications that go through court end up getting approved. And this is not, it's not something crazy, it was, at least in my opinion, it was a three and a half acre parcel that zoning would have allowed to be building lots, has water and sewer. And I was proposing fourteen homes in which water would be affordable on smaller, uh, single family lots, with just smaller footprint. Trying to m- meet a price point. Um, daily we get, daily, probably daily, we get calls looking for lower priced houses, they want to be under five hundred thousand or six hundred thousand dollars, I'm like, that's how much it costs me to build a house right now, I can't, if you have a piece of land, I can come build it for you for six hundred thousand, but I can't give you a piece of land and build a house at that price point, which is just incre- crazy. And five years ago, we could build that same house at four fifty, which is where the, the market is going. And then the other one, and, and I think it's in Hyrum's notes that he asked me to maybe talk a little bit about his senior housing, um that's the other phone calls we get continuously, these people say, love the town, don't want to leave, can't find anything I can afford, that's on one level. I don't need three thousand, four thousand square feet, but I love the town, I don't want to leave, I've spent forty years here, raised my family here, and but there are no opportunities. Uh, I'm sure that's exactly what you guys are, you know, feeling here.
So just using that as the kind of kick into the, the discussion, I mean, we're strictly advisory. And so our, what, what, at least I envision is that w- we can be sort of the arms and legs for planning zoning. Having sat on planning zoning for eight years and Kim has been on for longer than that, uh or had been on for longer than that. You don't get focused on issues, you're constantly dealing with whatever comes on the agenda. So what, what I'm hoping we can do is um with this issue of affordable housing, with the fact that any town can try and put their head in the sand and hope that Hartford's gonna ignore what's going on. It doesn't seem like that's going to be the case, so I'm hoping that we can, as a town, figure out what works for us. And try to promote some sort of a plan that at a minimum puts us at the back of the line, if the state wants to say, you know, we want another Woodbridge, we want to make an example of some town, we wouldn't be a good candidate for that. So, you know, one of the issues, and I think, Hyrum, you, you passed on the, the questions that we, we pulled together. W- we are just trying to figure out that you know, if it's strictly zoning starts changing, planning zoning starts changing some of the zoning regs. But right now, our standard is two acres, single family house. So I'm not saying this is where they're gonna go, we'd recommend, but let's say that it got to the point where they're saying, no, we'll allow four units on a two acre lot. Okay, so we've made that change. Do your, do your peers look at that and say, oh yeah, we're really interested in that, or say, thanks, but no thanks, yeah?
And can I add, and would it result in anything quote unquote affordable to do the four? Because
Correct.
It could attract without necessarily resulting in what our goal is.
Yeah, right, and, and so at the, again, the way I sort of look at it, I, I look at organically affordable, your point, a house that's priced under five hundred thousand, not being restricted, but more affordable versus the technical definition of being restricted or subsidized or whatever, and, and is affordable. So I don't think the town should be as concerned about meeting the thirty G threshold of the ten percent. What we need to do is just be creating for our own benefit, housing stock and variety, to your point, not only for seniors to be able to transition into, but for younger families to be able to come in and buy the starter home so they can get into town, and then as our seniors transition out of the bigger homes, they can buy into the, the homes that are being vacated. So, and we just don't have that, I think everything else is dealing with the fact that we have surplus stuff market, it's just, it's not what we do.
Yep. Um, first, before I forget, can Kim hear me okay? Yeah, I can't see you. She's behind me, okay, I just want to make sure I'm speaking up and up, I don't want to exclude her.
She's weak.
Um, okay, great. Um, I mentioned that I, I've done some eight thirty G projects, I'm not a big fan of eight thirty G, believe it or not, um but it's the only alternative I had available to do something. Uh, I don't know, other than Rocky Corner, I think, was that eight thirty, that was, so started as eight thirty G, I think.
I, I think there was one other, Kim, was there other, one other applicant that attempted to use eight thirty G that eventually did not come through?
I think it was rejected and then
No, actually, Rocky Corner initially was not an eight dash thirty G, didn't go anywhere, it came back as an eight dash thirty G, Chris Smith did that one.
Got it, right, okay.
And um, yeah, you know
So, so you haven't had too much of exposure to that, which is kind of a good thing.
Yeah.
And what I would always encourage you is to put together regulations that work well enough that you'll never have to see an eight thirty G application. I, I think if your regulations are done properly, you'll never have to deal with that, where somebody comes in like me or anybody else and just says, this is what I want, I don't really care if you like it or not, because I can do whatever I want. And I'm not giving you landscaping and I'm not gonna, you know, list of things that, you know, you know the stuff, everything that's not health and safety related is out the window. Um, and it makes it very difficult from a town perspective to say, we like it here or there, or we'd like it to look like this, or you know, those sorts of things, you lose all control, so if you can do things like some of the stuff that Hyrum's, you know, outlined, um something simple, ADUs, making those as simple as possible. Uh, I think, I think I saw in your regulations, I looked at it earlier today, that it requires a special permit. That's a pain in the neck, I don't want to do an ADU anywhere, I gotta do a special permit, because, and, and the customer doesn't want me to tell them, I can probably build you an ADU, but it's gonna take us three or four months to go find out if we can get an approval. And you say, well, why is it that long? It should only be one meeting, well, it is except that it's a month to get ready and it's a month and, well, the notices together, and a month to have the hearing, and then a month to make sure the appeal, does, nobody, no neighbor appeals it. So four months later, I say, yep, lucky you, you get to build your ADU. And that's just way too long. Quite honestly, it should be done, done administratively, in my opinion, and some towns have started to do that, and I've always said there's two, you, you kind of outlined, you never get to do the planning aspect of your job, you're always dealing with the zoning and somebody brings in applications, that's all you're doing is you're handling zoning and you never talk about the planning, plan ahead, tell us what you want, and then maybe you'll get what you want, because you've planned properly for it. So I would much rather see you put the effort into doing those types of things. Making an ADU, walk in, here's my plan, this is how it conforms to whatever regulations you put in place, whether it's size or location or setbacks or parking requirements or all those other things. And Hyrum or Lena will look at him and say, they meet all the criteria, here you go, go over to the building department and get your permit. Done, I mean, and, and I think at that point, you've gotten exactly what you wanted. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be any harder than that, and I think there are a lot of areas, um, you, you'll probably notice when I talk about zoning regulations specially related to residential, I think most of them are probably unnecessary today. And that people put all these rules in, which, well, I look at rules from residential planning and zoning as restrictions. Restricting someone's rights to do what they want with their property. One of the guys that were protecting the overall community or the immediate neighbors. And for the most part, kind of a bunch of crap. It might make you feel good, but the reality is, there's nothing that most people are gonna do that are gonna grossly impact the neighbors or the community at large. In residential zoning.
Two questions, but one is, um, building, building codes are constantly changing, has that also caused the, the, the cost of the projects to significantly increase?
Yeah. So, yeah, if you follow the, the codes at all, um mechanical codes and energy efficiency are probably the two areas that are really taken over, um, some, some good, but it affects affordability. You know, if somebody's building a million dollar house and it costs an extra fifty thousand dollars to insulate a house, not a big deal, it's part of the budget. When you're trying to build a four hundred thousand dollar house and it's twenty grand more to insulate, it's a big deal, and that really impacts everybody. Um, and our, our, our basic code that's been in place, let's say, for the last ten or fifteen years is still, what we were building fifteen years ago is not the same insulation values that we're building today. But they're still, they were far superior in nineteen, well, I'll say two thousand, uh, what we're building then to what we're building in nineteen eighty is day and night. And the same with some of the, the, the um mechanical codes, electrical, um, there's lots of, of little things, and, and most of the stuff we'll talk about, there's not like one thing, I'd say, here, here's a magic pole, do this, and we solve the problem, it's, it's a hundred little things, it's trying to get the, the building codes down to, to a reasonable thing. It used to be that the building code was designed to be the minimum standard for health and safety, and it's gotten way beyond that. Because every manufacturer knows if they can get their product built into the code, they sell a lot more of their product. And that's what it's become, it's become more of a political battle of what, what, what can get into the code and force everybody to use more of whatever we sell, insulation or ground faults, you know, circuit breakers or remains, those types of things.
The other, the other big one, and perhaps through, and this may not be possible to answer, um I think that what we're all trying to figure out is, what's, what's the right density for the project? We, we really don't have any infrastructure here, I think that's it.
Yeah.
We really don't have any infrastructure, and so everything is probably gonna be well and septic. Um, but, but we're in, I mean, I'm interested in design, making things look good. But how, how dense do, can we get something, or how, what, what do we need to do when we're gonna make it attractive?
This is, I'll tell you exactly, I said this exact same thing to Madison, I said, stop worrying about density and, and, and how you're gonna design for it, let the engineering dictate what you can get. What I mean by that is, your septic systems are gonna tell you how much density you can have on a particular parcel. Whether we're talking about a one acre parcel that's got great soils and we can get a system big enough to have six bedrooms on it. At that point, if you have six bedrooms on it, do you care if it's a six bedroom house or three, two bedroom apartments?
Right.
You know, again, we need to take care of parking and some other ancillary things, but bottom line, that really shouldn't make that much of a difference. What I think you'll find here in Bethany, the same in Madison, and most other towns that don't have this, you know, they, they're not able to do high density. If we took away all zoning today from, from a residential standpoint, I'm not gonna get into whether we should have commercial zones and retail and all that kind of stuff, that's a whole nother conversation, but if you took out everything, you said you could build anything you want, as long as you can build a septic and a well on it, at any density you could design. How many houses do you think we'll build here? You guys, you know, the community is gonna build in the next thirty years. I can't imagine you building more than a thousand homes, and that, and I don't, and that's just a guess off the top of my head. So if in thirty years we build another thousand homes, does that change the town's makeup? I don't think so. And that would be with like no zoning, you could do, like, let everybody do a free fall, what, free, free for all, whatever you want. And you wouldn't get like, wouldn't, you wouldn't drive through and say, Bethany, you see such a nice town. And then they got rid of zoning and all hell broke loose, I just don't really think that would ever happen. Because the, the, the soil, well, you, you have soils, I shouldn't say soils, and you've got a lot of watershed area. Uh, so when, when you factor in those things, you've already got the, the limitations and restriction on density right there. Without having to arbitrarily pick a number, you just don't have to do it, because I can't make it happen, I mean, you, you could tell me I could have a hundred units on an acre, I can't build a hundred units on an acre. And if I had a hundred acres, I couldn't build a hun- I probably couldn't build a hundred units on a hundred acres. It's just not likely to happen, but, but if we have, quite honestly, if, if we could find a spot that had great soils, that would be the ideal place to build a hundred units. In my opinion, um, now, you could say, well, that soil happens to be the best farmland, or it might be in the area that's most desirable with the most high, high cost housing in the town now, and we don't want to put apartments next to them. Again, the density is not gonna change the atmosphere of the entire town or even the neighborhood. Um, it's so highly unlikely, I can't, I can't think of a situation that somebody's gonna come in and say, you ruined, you ruined the town or you ruined my neighborhood because
Exactly, contrary, and, you know, people get concerned about density, I tell them, well, take a drive to Washington, look at the green. It's not bad.
Right.
And so, um, that was done way, way before any zoning was in place, so.
Well, and, and I, I think the bigger issue really is water.
Would you touch on a little bit, the, the Rocky Corner situation?
So, you know, if, if you're talking about a development that's gonna have a shared water system that's gonna serve more than twenty-five people, good luck, because we already know where that's gonna
Yeah, I, I, I personally would never do a water system having experienced, and I'm all, I'm sort of on the outside of that, the, the bank is really driving that situation right now, and we're trying to advise them, but between um Regional Water Authority and the Public Department of Public Health, it is a nightmare, right?
Is that a dead soap?
It's, no, it's still going through the process, we've drilled three additional wells there in the last year, so I think we finally have the quantity of water. I don't want to, I don't want to get sidetracked, it has PFOS.
Yeah.
Is, is one of the big problems in a couple of the wells. And then Regional Water Authority doesn't want the responsibility if they have to treat for PFOS. So they're saying, if you, you design a system, make sure it's including taking care of that, and then we'll take over the system. And I understand from their perspective, they don't want the state or federal government to come down someday and say, now you gotta treat for PFOS, and they have this huge expense, and the, the income they're getting off of managing those thirty some odd units is nothing to them. And why would they spend a million dollars, which, you know, I don't think PFOS would maybe cost a million, but it would be hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, and that's, that's the problem there, but, but you're right, the, the water system is a problem, and I think that's why I would focus on lower, smaller density projects, um, that could be done by a probably a single well. Um, stay away from turning it to public, basically, once you get, I think it is twenty-five, it becomes public utility, basically.
So again, go to my make league scenario that there is certain areas of town that have been designated that um, instead of single family on two acres, you can do up to four units, or maybe even whatever septic and water allows, you can do up to that density. If we were to, I mean, that's always gonna have the natural cap on it though. It's, it's never going to be twenty units on that.
Right.
Yep, so, so I think part of what I don't know whether we can bring anything that's fact or information based back to planning zoning, to say you don't have to really worry about these kinds of issues. And, and to your point, having sat on planning zoning for eight years now, I do care about what things look like and the character of the town. But the best way that we can engage with the developer is to be clear about what are the, the key parameters that we fill? And as long as you can meet those parameters, you can meet health, safety, water, septic, everything else like that. Knock yourself out, you know, if you can come with an idea for eight units on two acres, and you've met everything else. So, y- you know, Bob, i- is there a magic number that a developer says, if I can't get X number of units out of this, I'm not really interested?
I guess I would start with, probably ideally would be a minimum of ten. Um, and I'm saying that from a relatively small developer standpoint that says, it takes me the same amount of work to, to submit an application for four, four lot subdivision, let's just say single family, forget the four lot or four lots or forty lots, it's the same number steps, I gotta go through the same process, I gotta hire an engineer. If I get too big, I'd probably get into maybe traffic, that's like the only thing that maybe gets added to a larger project that, that I'm not dealing with on a smaller project. I'm still doing soil testing, I'm still doing engineering for everything else, and I'm, I'm doing water, either drilling water wells ahead of time or hopefully finding a a location where I know surrounding areas have water, and, and so I have a pretty good confidence that there's water in the area. Um, so obviously, the more, the better, just because of the efficiencies of going through that process, it's still gonna take me three months to go through wetlands at minimum, um, whether it's, it's, I have no wetlands on the property, it's a two acre parcel or I've got a forty acre parcel and it's got half, it's half of its wetland, it's still gonna be that same problem, um, gonna go through that same process, so that, that, that approval process is the same, whether it's very small or very large, so the larger scale, just the efficiency gets better. But the reality of that here is that, you know, it's probably gonna be difficult to do projects that really help from that volume. Um, because of the utility, lack of utilities, um, so ten units would probably be a project that would work. I just recently, one of my, my last eight thirty G projects was um ten units on an acre lane, high water sewer, but I built five duplexes on it, on those, no streets to buildings on existing room.
Rental?
These were rentals, yes, yep. Um, and they were under eight thirty G, so I have um three affordable units. Um, the, the one thing with eight thirty G is there's, there's magic numbers, it's really multiples of ten um that really help it because it's, the, the cap is, the requirement is thirty percent. So when I build six units, I have two. When I build seven, eight, or nine, I have three. And ten, I'm sorry, ten, I have three, and as soon as I go to eleven, I have a fourth one. So I'm always trying to get to ten, if, if you're doing a hundred units, one extra unit doesn't matter in the math. But when you're doing these really small scales, you're doing six, eight, ten, or twelve units. And you've probably experienced it, if you've been on the commission for long enough, someone always comes along and, and a subdivision and says, plan looks good, I like your application, but that one lot looks kind of funny. And could we, if you cross that out, I think I could support your application, I've heard this more often than not. And like, well, are you telling me my, that lot doesn't comply? No, it, it probably complied, I just don't like it, I think I, the project would look nicer without it. And again, if it's a hundred lots and I go, well, am I getting my approval tonight, am I gonna fight you over one lot for a hundred? No. But when I'm at six lots, and you're saying, I just lost twenty percent of my lots, that's a problem. Um, and that, that's not unusual, and that, that same situation happened with eight thirty G where that, that ten number really works, and which is why that project I just did, and I looked at other layouts, these were duplexes that I built on this property. I thought about building townhomes, it happened to be in a residential neighborhood, it was adjacent to a firehouse, but all residential, single family around it. And I said, you know, it probably doesn't make sense for me to build townhouses. I wouldn't want to live next to a, a row of townhouses of, you know, twelve or fourteen or fifteen units that might have fit on by not having to separate the buildings. So we, we sort of in our own mind compromised ourselves and said, let's get ten, well, let's make sure we get ten because nine or eight really makes it more difficult. Again, that's a little different because we had utilities, but I would think the same kind of thought process would go on here, is I'd be looking for a parcel large enough to probably do ten units. And, and, and if it's not an under eight thirty G, um ten units would probably still be preferable, just because the, the more density, you get more efficiencies of just general construction. Um, you know, you'd be building twenty, twenty, twenty bedroom septic system if you're trying to get two bedroom units, and that, that's typically what we find that's kind of missing. Um, and it could be one bedroom, there's a little different calculation for the bedroom versus septic size on the first bedroom versus additional, but theoretically, just consider that every bedroom has to go into the septic, and so that's what we're trying to, to kind of control. Um, and, and the same with, with, you know, with the water volume that we need, um. So, so I would think on, on a smaller scale project, ten is probably, would make me probably feel pretty good about doing a project um there. Um, and again, I, and I, I think those are a little bit easier, and I Um there. Um and again, I and I I think those are a little bit easier, and I've I've tried to do some of these projects as a smaller developer. Cause I want to show people that they can work financially. Um because most most larger developers want to build fifty and a hundred units, and it's like, I can actually make a living doing these, and I want to show. Other folks that I know in the industry that these actually work this way. And and that's why I kind of focus that. And I think it's a little bit easier for towns to accept and neighbors to accept because it's not this drastic change. Um to their neighborhood when when they see it.
Have a question.
Yep.
Have you ever uh gotten help from the state for a project?
I I have never used any state funding for any of my projects. Um I've I've used the eight thirty G program, and I I've talked about it. On the rental. It's not as desirable, they they have a couple of programs on rental, but they typically want larger projects, and they want you to de-restrict more of your units than you do under eight thirty G. Um if you're being required to de-de-restrict them under eight thirty G, they're not gonna really pay you for those additional units. Because they've, in their mind, they've already gotten them. So they want additional, they want more than thirty percent to be affordable on the rental side. There is some money available now for uh for sale product, and I'm not taking advantage of that either, but there are some programs.
I was thinking of, which I read about, but I don't know, it's applicable, might be for big, bigger things, but Build for Connecticut.
Yeah, Build for Connecticut, that is, that is on the for sale side. Good program. Um but again, they liked it. They're they're sort of like my efficiency, the state's efficiency is doing larger projects. They don't want to give me money for three units, and all they can, you know, they 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 can't really spout out that they. Got three additional affordable units, that doesn't make them feel that good. But when they can come in and say, we got a hundred units built, we got thirty or forty, or fifty affordable units. You know, that that's that's headline news, that's what that's what they're looking to do. And it's, and that's just an efficiency thing through uh Department of Housing and Jaff and stuff like that. So, you know, there 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 might be some opportunities here, but probably not a great deal. Um I mean, then there's other complications, you get into like tax credit deals where there's federal money is involved and and things like that, that. Would be way, way beyond what I would typically do.
I thought one way, because I don't know the development process, but if there was a piece of land that's been identified. That may have possibility, do you have to take a a economic chance on water and and septic?
So the first thing we would do is, we would be looking at the soils soil conditions, whether there's existing testing or do some some of these preliminary testing.
You would do the testing?
Yes, yeah, we we would do that right up front. So that's that's our step one. My second thing, or actually, it's sort of come, happens at the same time, is I call my well driller. Was assigned to drilling right over in Cheshire, you probably maybe, I'm sure he's done hundreds of wells. They're one of the larger well drillers in the area, and typically, they know where there's problem water. Uh and where there's not problem water, and they'll tell you, you know, we've drilled wells there, and you're gonna spend a lot of money on treatment, or. It's very deep, and it's not good quality water, or no, you got no problem there. So we constantly talk to them when we first identify a piece. To see if that's e- if it's even feasible. And they can usually give us some pretty good guidance on that. You're never guaranteed, because you can drill two holes fifty feet or a hundred feet apart, and one's got a ton of water and one's dry. And 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 I don't have the magic wand to figure out which is which.
Are you starting to see any changes in pricing on the. On supplies, on the bricks and mortar part?
They stabilize, but they're not gonna go back down. Typically, they rarely do. Our lumber prices are down a little bit right now.
They are.
Um from where they were like in the winter, like about nine months ago. But yeah, I'm talking five percent down maybe, um but a lot of labor costs are up. Uh and they won't, I doubt that they come down. Usually, they go up and then they stay there. That's usually service, that's a new new base, and then they go up from there.
Yeah. I think for for me, with my context of trying to be sure that we look at how to create things that are. Genuinely affordable. The use of eight thirty G is one way to accomplish that. So if we can get someone like yourself. Who does a quality product and does more units than we might typically accept in a community, then you get that. Place portion that's affordable, so. But I can't for the life of me imagine, and my son's a contractor, that any builder would. Be able to use density in a community like Bethany to achieve affordability. Uh because the motivation is not that, frankly, how we wouldn't expect it to be, honestly.
Yep.
And the the cost of what it, you know, the only way affordable housing becomes affordable is it costs the same to build it. But there's a subsidy to offset that, so you don't turn to the private sector typically or the public.
Yeah, and I should clarify, so when I talk, when I'm thinking affordable in my head, I'm thinking like the sixty, eighty percent, and and income kind of stuff. Not the the thirty, or forty, or fifty kind of numbers that that other people need. That that really does take some kind of government subsidy where you were going with it. It's got, it takes government money of some sort. Now, that could come from local, it could be uh tax abatements.
Sure.
Um from the from the town standpoint, but you have to realize, what whatever we do. Say we collectively to build affordable housing, you're asking someone else to to pay the bill.
We're all paying for it, essentially, it's not someone else, it's us.
Yeah, so so if I say, give somebody a tax abatement to do it, well, that means everybody else's taxes in the room has to pay a little more. Might might all be pennies, but there's some somebody's, there's still a cost to run the government, and somebody's gotta pay for it. So if you're asking, telling somebody else, they don't have to pay as much, someone else is paying more. You can do that, whether you, you know, you you give, you know. Tax credits to seniors, or veterans, or disabled, you you pick, pick what it is. Someone else is carrying the bill, the cost doesn't go away, it doesn't get changed. Um and and the same thing, when when we we build under eight thirty G, those thirty percent of units, we're we're trying, we're trying and hoping, we're balancing it out with. Trying to get enough dense, additional density to offset that cost. The sixty percent units, w- we lose money every every, e- either on the sale price. Or or the rental, we lose about a thousand dollars a month on a sixty percent unit, on on the on the rental rate. And about five hundred dollars on an eighty percent unit. So we're trying to make that up with additional density to build more market rate units to offset that. That's really, that that's the math. Equation on the rental side, and it's kind of similar on the for sale side, it's a little different calculation because you have to calculate in interest rates. Which makes it really complicated, and it's it's really one of the flaws of eight thirty G, is when interest rates are up. You have to lower the price because you're still working at it, you're trying to hit a price point, a monthly cost. And when they have to pay more for interest. So it becomes, it becomes a big problem. Um so. So that's really what we do, and you you had brought up, you know, that. Magic ten percent goal of eight thirty G, the whole outline of that, which was really nothing more than a way to negotiate how many people we need to vote on this bill. And if we made it twelve percent, we weren't gonna get enough votes, and if we made it eight percent, we weren't getting enough votes, so we ended up at ten. It was, there was no magic number that all of a sudden the world's all better when we have ten percent affordable. My my thought has always been that if we all somehow magically got to ten percent, we should raise the goal to fifteen. That that would probably happen. Town like Bethany will probably never get to, I don't, I remember you were like one or two percent now, maybe less than one percent. So so, you know, to, I wouldn't worry so much about that, but what I do always think is that when we make a little effort there. I'm also creating these additional units that are non-restricted, that should also be less expensive than it would have been if I just came in with my market rate. Going back to my fourteen lots, it's not about the four affordable units I'm building, it's the fact that I'm building nine more. That are gonna be less expensive than if I just went and built my three houses, which I could have gotten approved in two months. And they they people would already be occupying, but I would have built them for eight to nine hundred thousand dollars. Needed nine hundred thousand dollars. I'm sorry, go ahead, Ken.
I was gonna say, not to mention too, that each of those units that you create, increase, raises the bar for how many. To get to that ten percent.
Right, so you're always chasing that number. You're right, so thirty percent, it's, you don't get that thirty percent closer, you're getting. Marginally closer, but the more units you're building, the more non, non-affordable units you build, that bar keeps moving, so.
The other thing on the ten percent, just to to get, in my opinion, in there is that. To someone like you, is that I wish that. It would, it could be considered on a different basis than everybody being ten percent, that's ridiculous. I mean, if you don't have the infrastructure, you're a small town, we shouldn't be the same as Bridgeport. No way.
Right. Yeah, yeah, the the difficulty of of getting there with without uh utilities. Of course, what some people would say is, well, we should bring utilities to Bethany, and then you could meet it.
And who's gonna pay for that?
Yeah, I mean, that's the problem, unless the state's gonna write big checks, and quite honestly, that doesn't like solve all the problems, that's, that is one piece of the problem. But, you know, unless unless we're gonna just make everything, you know, high density, and and I don't think the whole state should be high density, there are places that. It doesn't make sense. And the fact that you, I mean, you your best argument is you've got huge watershed for Regional Water Authority. So you're 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 providing.
More than one protection.
Yeah, that protection for water for, I don't know, fifteen or twenty towns, I don't know how many, maybe more than that, or whatever, how many towns. Take advantage of Regional Water Authority's water, we can thank you for protecting it up here. And that and that should really be part of the calculation in my head.
All the towns are in the same shape, I think Easton is one, am I right? A lot of watershed, and they're in the same position. And and asking for dispensation.
Yeah.
Uh because of that already.
Yeah, and I think, uh honestly, I know there's, well, the legislation that was supposedly passed, but now it's not passed because it didn't get signed, and they may continue to talk. A- about that whole problem. I think there there will be some sort of adjustment when they, it's not gonna be a one size fits all and says. Everybody has to be ten percent, but I think they're gonna realize that. Regionally, we're trying to get ten percent, but maybe we need to build more affordable in Derby, or in Beacon Falls. And maybe there's gonna be less in Bethany because we have watersheds and we don't have utilities, and but, you know, that doesn't mean you don't do a little bit to to. You know, you don't want to tell everybody that can't afford to be in Bethany, including where 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 I started with this, which is the people that have been here a long time, or their kids, to say. Thanks for growing up here, go go to Beacon Falls if you want a new expensive house.
Right.
And if you if you get a good job, you can come back, but in the meantime. Matter of fact, live over there, because we need you to come up here and work in the school system, or I need you to pour my coffee for me when I stop at Dunkin' Donuts in the morning, and. The hundreds of jobs that we can go through that just don't pay as well as, don't pay well enough to afford to live where you work. And that's that's really where the whole the whole story is in my, in my mind, is that we're trying to create the balance. But but you're not gonna solve the whole problem.
Oh, no.
And don't, and don't try, don't frustrate yourself with that goal, don't do nothing because you can't get there, do what you can.
Part of my job is clock watching, so um are there any other questions for Bob at this point?
No.
That would be helpful.
I have one more if I'm not pushing it. Have you, as of yet, built uh an affordable housing project of any size? Without city water and uh s- city sewer?
I have not. Everything I have done has been on water and sewer. Um I would, I would look at it, um i- i- it does, I I think to your point, it's gonna be very hard. If I had my brothers, I would always do a water sewer because I know there's a fixed cost, and I can I can budget for that and calculate that. Um and my fear would be coming to someplace and go, okay, we we got the three affordable units, but the. Market rate units have to be really high. Now. They say that's that's a problem, the good thing is you're in Bethany, so those other ones could be really high in order to offset it. But I'm not about the three units, I really want all ten of them to be closer to that, and I think I can do that. With public utilities easier than I can with well septic.
True.
That's the reality of it. I'm happy to answer more, but I also agree with your timing, and Hyrum knows how to get ahold of me, so if you guys have additional questions.
We're just starting this process, so we really appreciate you coming in, and we're trying to get as smart as possible. Um Ken, did you have anything else you wanted to ask or comment on?
Think you're muted.
I couldn't find, my mouse wouldn't make it go to the audio thing. Um I don't know if I can ask this, but I'll ask this, and you can tell me if you can answer it or not. Is there anything that you could suggest we could do with Rocky Corner? Any advice? I mean, it's already there, it's already smoothly built.
I think we are at the ninth inning of water, the water situation. I think we're getting close to having it resolved. That could still mean several more months, but I don't think we're talking years anymore.
Okay.
That that will resolve the the primary issue, which is, we have sufficient water. Of the quality that the Regional Water Authority will accept the system, and and the bank is gonna be willing to fund it. And or at least set aside that money for a future sale to an investor. Um the bank has been amazing to me, I think if they had it to do over again, they would have walked away from day one. The whole thought was that they were not making enough at the the value of of what they were getting, because of the risk of the water, quite honestly. Made the offer so low that they said, no, we're gonna stay with it and do it. We kind of naively thought that we could get that resolved in six to nine months. And so they had us finish the uni- the fifth units that were under construction were, are now ninety to ninety percent done. And they just can't occupy them.
So what is the total number of units that can be flipped on once?
It's around twenty five, I don't know if that's the exact number.
Okay, it's twenty two is what I saw.
It might be twenty two. And now we have enough capacity to build the additional units that were originally proposed, which I think was thirty or thirty three. And and I think even convert the clubhouse into three additional units, I think is kind of where we were.
I I thought I heard when you came in before the bank. That there were thirty units, but you wanted to convert the the clubhouse, the common room, to another three units. So I I.
Yeah, it's been so such a long, I I haven't really thought a lot about it since I was in front of your commission two and a half years ago, ma- maybe longer.
I mean, for for my perspective, and whatever the bank does to to get it done. But if we've got twenty two units, if that's the number, that are real close to being able to flip on.
Yeah.
That's huge. Introducing twenty. Smaller, quote unquote, more affordable.
Yep.
And a third of those are required through deed restriction to be.
Yep.
Affordable.
Yep.
So that means bringing on, yeah, six or seven affordable living units and an additional.
So, yeah, I I think if 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 I if I had a crystal ball, I'd say within the next twelve months. That project could probably be getting close to being turned on. I think between the the final design of the water system and getting that that equipment ordered, installed, and operational. And then we have to go back in and do some water connections between the pump house and the individual units. Um and. And then probably something with some of the stuff that we came back to your commission about was, originally, they were gonna just have gravel driveways, and I think most people on rental are gonna need that paved. So it's gonna be some infrastructure, there's, right now, there's no site lighting at all on the site, so there's, there's a few little things to be worked out. I don't think anything insurmountable at this point, and you guys have been very open and flexible, and, you know, for the for the reason you said, we like the eight D units turned on. And we we're hoping for them to be turned on five years ago, so.
And what's the ownership gonna be of it?
I'm sorry?
What, who's gonna own it?
My guess, the bank does, obviously doesn't want to own it long term, they were trying to recoup as much as they could, and they're losing money. Guaranteed, they're losing a boatload of money.
Daily.
When when this is all done, but it will be turned over to an investor that would more than likely. More than, more than likely, somebody. If I can, there were just a couple of things, I want, I I kind of want to leave you with some ideas or stuff that you can think about, and we we talked maybe even before the meeting. Um or maybe right at the beginning of the meeting, your ADU regulations that require special permits, so I'm thinking of like little simple things that you could do. There was some conversation, and there was something in your legs about missing or middle housing duplex, if it's being allowed, or you guys are working on it. I think that would be great. If you can just get those kind of things happening on what would traditionally be a single family lot. Great things to just build a small, small amount of housing. Um a couple of things that that I, and I've talked to a lot of towns about is, their zoning regulations have a lot of. Little restrictions that add cost to it, like the buildable area, your front, rear, and side yards. When we build roads now, it used to be we'd build roads, I mean, not even that long ago, my my last road committed over a thousand dollars a foot. And three years earlier was seven hundred dollars a foot, so those costs have gone through the roof. And so when we can shorten the length of road for every lot that we can build, it it helps us. So if you can get your lot frontage requirements, I think, if I remember right, they might be at two hundred feet now.
Yes.
Um if we could get that down to a hundred and fifty feet, that's a huge savings, and it doesn't necessarily mean you're getting more lots. But it gives you an ability to make a narrow lot that maybe is a little deeper, and it won't work on every site, but there may be opportunities. Um I think you had the buildable area required like a contiguous area that did not, was was connected and with no wetlands. And I'm not sure that necess- I'm not sure what what benefit that has. Like I I go back to, why do we put this rule in? Like, why why are we putting this restriction in on things? Um the side yard setback just allows us to build a larger house, and especially when you're on a relatively large lot, even a one acre lot, like you really need. You need to have to be fifty feet off the road, that means I've got fifty feet of an electric trench to get power to the house, if it were forty, it's only ten feet, but. Does that, like, wh- why are you regulating that ten feet? Why are you telling me I can't do something with that ten feet on my property, you know, or any landowner? Um so I see little things like that. Um I don't know, there was, there's some in your definitions about a minimum square, but I didn't see it in your regulations that you required. And I think you you've probably seen this, because it was on the planners list serve that I also watch occasionally, and they're like, why do we have this other? And I like, why do we have this other, this other requirement that you have to have a square of a certain size that fits your lot? Now, I guess the thought process way back was you're not getting oddly shaped lots, but if we can get an oddly shaped, shaped lot that still meets all the other technical reasons for a lot from an engineer's standpoint, why do we care sort of what it looks like if we can fit a nice house on it? And a more affordable house. So those are just some of the little things. Your subdivision regulations, uh, this is not, this is a little bit uncommon, I think, we could require a public hearing if five neighbors decide they want a public hearing, I think, if I read your regulation right. And, and that just jumped out at me, like, public hearings, we hate, like, they, I want the public to show up at the planning stage, not at the zoning stage. And you know they're gonna come up, because they just don't want, then people don't want change, that kind of thing, I, I get all that, but that's just one more step where we're gonna spend, we're gonna bring all our experts in for another meeting or two. We have timing issues with notifications, and you gotta make sure we've notified, and somebody's gonna show up and say, I didn't get noticed. I can already tell you, they, they're, they're gonna say that automatically. And now you gotta prove that they really, you really did, or you did it properly based on the assessor's records and all that kind of stuff. Um, but if you could eliminate that, I know it's required in a re-subdivision, which I've, I've thought about legislation to eliminate that. Because I, I could never understand why it's not necessary, it's not required for a subdivision, but is for a re-subdivision, and like, for life, we can't figure out the reasoning behind that. And I'm sure it's in statute, like, because everybody does it. And then your, your rear lots, they also require special exception for rear lots, I think.
Yep.
And again, I'm not sure why, why you make people go through that extra step, there's probably other ways. You know, maybe you could restrict it to one out of every four lots, or you know, some other number, but why, why make it more difficult? Especially we're trying to minimize roads. It, it costs us more to build them, and then the town, it costs them more to maintain them, so rear lots are actually a benefit to everyone because the homeowner is now gonna take care of maintaining their driveway to their house. Um, so those are just a couple little, little simple things that I just saw, and there's probably hundreds of more that you could come up with by going through regs, but I always encourage people to just kind of look at those sorts of things. And while they, you know, individually, they may not have a huge impact, I think collectively, you can start to have an, an impact on the cost and, and not hurt what you're really trying to do, which is, the, the, again, going back to my thought, is the only reason for regulations is to protect either neighbors or the community as a whole. And other than that, if, if you're not hurting either of those, then it should be a free-for-all on your lot, do whatever you want. In my opinion, again, but that's, that's sort of my, my political philosophy, more so than ending from a development standpoint, but, and you get, you get where I'm coming from. So it, it might be worthwhile to have, you know, every member of the planning zoning commission go reach for our regs and see if you could pick out a handful of things that you think, like, why do we regulate this? And Hyrum and, and I mean, I'm sure could come through and go, I always think of like setbacks are one of those things that Lena probably deals with that from a ZVA standpoint. Weekly or daily, if somebody wants to do something, like, if we just changed it and said, well, everybody could build within twenty feet of the property line, half of your request for variances go away, and we don't have to come up with some lame hardship to justify why I need to build closer to my property line. And that's really what happens.
So I think
I'm, I'm not being really frank, but you know, that's, that's kind of what it is. That's step one is, okay, I need a hardship, let me think, how about this? No, that's not real hardship, all right, how about this? And we go through a list of coming up with something to justify.
From my, my perspective, I want to make sure that if we come up with recommendations for planning zoning, it actually results in movement in the market, that developers say, okay, now you're doing that, we're willing. Otherwise, to your point, you're gonna get a bunch of people out there saying, why are you changing all this stuff and who's benefiting from this? And if it doesn't move the needle in terms of getting development, you're creating major headaches in town, for planning zoning becomes political. So I want to be personally very targeted, very searchable. If this makes a difference, let's really consider, if it doesn't make a difference, get it off the table. Because we don't need to deal with the distraction and
Yeah.
Because you're at point, there's always gonna be people out there, uh, you're changing it for a reason, and we don't like.
The nice thing is, if you do it from a planning perspective, you are doing it for a reason to try to create affordability or just create less restrictions for any, any property owner. Um, and maybe making it life easier, easier for your staff. I mean, those are all valid reasons for doing it. And you're not doing it from politi- political standpoint is when I've got an application to ZVA. And now it becomes political because Lena and I are, you know, scratching each other's back on, you know, how, how do we, how do we get this through?
Right.
How do we come up with a reason to justify it? And, and then it sort of becomes more political, and somebody says, yeah, the only reason Bob got that is because he knows Lena, or, you know, I'm friends with Hyrum, or, you know, I know one of you on the, you know, somebody on the commission, or, you know, I'm on, I'm in the right party, or, you know, whatever it is. You know, they come up with all those reasons why, you know, they, they think that you pulled one over on them. But when you do it at a planning process, there's no application, so we're not doing
I, I, I understand, and I appreciate that, but we want planning to look at something that will hopefully have an impact as opposed to making changes. I just, I've been on the commission too long, Kim, you've been through it, it just, you start dealing with all sorts of winds blowing, and you don't need them.
Right.
So thank you very much, we do have a couple things we gotta wrap up.
Thank you very much. Happy to be here. Again, if you need me for anything else, I'm happy to talk to Hyrum. If you came up with your listing and said, would you read through this list and stop, tell me if any of these matter to you? And I could probably go through them and go, eh, not a big deal, or, yeah, that one's kind of nice, we could tweak it or something, I'd be happy to do that kind of thing.
Thank you very much.
So I'm gonna excuse myself so you guys can finish your meeting unless you want me to.
Yeah, no, we, we've got about five minutes, and then we're, we're out of here.
Okay.
At least I'm out.
Thank you, everyone.
You folks can hang around.
Thanks, Hyrum. Lena, well, thank you. Okay, thank you. I can.
Um, okay, so a couple of other things, um, Hyrum, you'd put together, and Bob brought a couple of those in his comments. Iron has put together something, and I'm comfortable, if you want to share it with the members of the committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, rather than taking time to kind of, no, we just really had a chance to digest it. But start looking at these, what, what I'd like to do, I'd like to move into, um, some concrete developments that we can start bringing to planning zoning. So I, I had a meeting last week where I updated, uh, the board of selectmen on what we've been doing. Um, and part of that was to get the authority from them to designate this committee, and I guess me as, as the chair, as being authorized representatives of the town to talk to the state about what kind of resources, assistance, support. I don't know if that's gonna be productive or not productive.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
So, so I've got that authority.
Because you're asking the right questions, and yeah, there are tools for small towns.
Right.
And resources for small
So I want to be able to start that process and get us connected in as, as a committee. Um, I also, because they were saying, oh, great, you guys have been meeting for five months, what kind of recommendations do you have? And I said, well, we're getting our feet underneath us, but I did tell them that it's my hope that by the end of this fall, so sometime before the end of the year, that we might have some initial recommendations that we'd like to bring to planning zoning. I also proposed to the planning zoning meeting last week, I think, that we set up a time for a special meeting for the planning zoning and for us to meet collectively.
Cool.
Because I've asked them to start thinking about what does planning and zoning, how can they take best advantage of what we're doing? What are the questions they really want us to look into and dig into to help them start to address all of this? So I'm hoping, and I'll work with Lena to try to get calendars coordinated, uh, within the next month that we can get some sort of a joint meeting between our committee and the BND commission.
I think it's really, from my point of view, and just speaking for myself here, that it's really important, listening to Bob, to keep the clear distinction between housing production and affordability.
I agree.
And to drill both of those enough that everybody's being transparent about what are we talking about here. Um, so as long as we do that, wherever it goes and however we come out, it's fine with me, but I, I don't want to conflate the two. I don't want to sort of trick ourselves into thinking that somehow if we have more production, we'll have more affordability, or I know we're not doing that, but I, I think as we launch into wider discussions.
No, I, I think it's
Really important to just be upfront about it.
I think that's, that's really your point, I think you've made the comment before.
Yeah.
Building higher density doesn't necessarily result in more affordable houses. Um, and, you know, I guess what, what the way I look at it is relative to the standard three thousand square foot, single-family house on two acres, that if it was built today, it sounds like it's closer to the million dollars, but in my mind, it's seven hundred and fifty to a million dollars.
If they get its market, so if you can get a million, you'll get a million.
Correct. So, you know, then the question is, if you can turn that into four units that sell for, let's say, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so the builder grosses, you know, sixteen, one point six, one point seven million out of that instead of getting a million dollars. Is that good for the developer? Is that not good for the developer?
Yeah, you heard him say ten.
Tens.
And you heard him say why.
Right.
And I think that's why, for me, Bethany, it's one of the beauties of Bethany. We are constrained in what we can do.
Right.
So how can we massage this?
Yeah, I am a little bit worried, though, I feel like it only insofar as that I, I think it's sort of flawed logic that, you know, if you put the, yes, you're, you're looking at natural restrictions, which I, I hear you. However, though, I, I mean, even if that weren't the case, though, I, I, I don't know, it kind of, I, I was a little bit, mm, you know. You know, when we're talking about sort of like, oh, well, if we just added another thousand people to the town, like, it wouldn't change
His premises were not necessarily ours, right?
Except not, but I mean, I think, I mean, but
Yep.
But the issue is that, is that if there were a spot in town, say, where those natural restrictions were not there, like, that to me is, is troublesome, and I don't mean that in a way to say we're not welcome, but what I'm saying is that it would fundamentally change
Yeah.
the traffic dynamics, you know, like, it's, it's that kind of thing, so I'm kind of like, if, but I, but that's my concern, that was that if we're starting at a very faulty premise, then how does that actually shape what other things could still take place?
Yeah, right.
Well, and I, I also think, I mean, my reaction to that too was the reason why the regs are there is because somebody did something that rubbed somebody the wrong way and presented a reasonable argument and said, that should never happen again. And if you go that wild frontier of remove everything and kind of let everybody, you're gonna go nuts, and so I would look at it the other way, which is, how do you start with all the existing restrictions and identify the ones that have virtually no impact or zero impact in terms of, and I might be concerned about? And then eliminate those, but then you have to kind of marry that up with, does it make any difference to a developer? And if it doesn't make any difference to the developer, and I, I, that's why I don't want to go down the road of, let's just sort of throw anything out the window.
No, I agree, and I, I actually understand, I think, I think, I agree with you, Lauren, in that it doesn't mean that anywhere where there is water and septic, that you can do anything you want. Just because, I mean, I don't think, I think engineering does provide a protection for us, but it doesn't it doesn't keep us from the sort of community responsibility of making good decisions about what we want to build and what we don't want to build, so.
Yeah, I agree with all that, I just wanted to address what Lauren said. He said a thousand units, we said thirty years. So that comes out to thirty-three units. So I think the number's not as big, and people say thousands.
No, 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 I, I
I just, I just think that as long as we address whatever the reasonable expectations are for the town, that we'll be in, in better shape, whatever that number comes out to be, whether it's twenty or
And that, I mean, personally, I don't think it's helpful to get trapped in numbers.
Right, yeah.
That by, you know, in five years, we're gonna have X number of this and that, it just, you don't have the ability.
Promise that anymore.
Well, yeah.
Well, the, the, one of the problems that the legislature had a long time ago, NE-TASH thirty-G, was that nobody wanted to do anything, and so they said, well, we need to, we need to make something happen.
Right.
There are still towns today, and all the webinars that we've had recently, they say, you know, we're a small town, and we don't even have any staff, and we can't do anything, we have no infrastructure. They're not looking at ADUs, they're not looking at potential, you know, expansions of any duplex where a three thousand square foot house goes now, things like that. There are a number of different things that the towns, smaller towns like us could try, and I think that's, that'll be helpful long-term, I think.
So with that, and again, if you guys want to keep going, you can, I, I do have this stuff out. Um, so, um, please review what Hyrum has put together. Um, Leslie, what, what I'd like to spend some time on next meeting for this group is what do we need to think about to start creating some of the entities, uh, legal? You know, you, you talked about the, the nonprofit developers.
Effort to actually produce affordable housing.
Correct.
That look like in a town.
What would that look like? Because I, I do think that is something concrete, and if we want to start moving forward. And I don't know if we need to do that within planning zoning, or if that can be outside of planning and zoning, but
I, I think Leslie's start on that will give us an idea of where to head, and I think then we go to the commission later.
Yeah.
Are there existing nonprofits operating?
Yes, yes, and there's a lot.
Not that they can know more about.
Yeah, and they can partner with a local group that's all volunteer and give their resources to, like their development hat, you know?
So I'd, I'd like to see if we can get back on.
Just a little bit, and then
Any other comments, do you people want to keep the meeting going, or should I adjourn?
I'm hungry.
Is that allowed?
Yeah.
If I could. Oh, I have one thing.
Oh, I think Kim beat me, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's, I can't see hands from here, so.
Okay.
All right. Well, hopefully you're, you're, uh, not gonna suffer through anything that your colleague is working through with the COVID.
Oh, my goodness, we're just killed today. Oh. But my, um, my comment was, sorry, really dry, too.
All right.
And the bridge is going off, my comment, now you run to meet with planning and zoning. Excuse me, but there's going to be a big turnover of planning and zoning in, in November.
Yep.
So maybe thinking about doing that after the first of the year.
That's a, that's actually a great point.
Yeah.
I, I should have thought about that, yes, but um, so we should get our act together. That into
We can talk about it, yeah, I want to go through that, unless you do. Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you, uh, great, great, uh
Feel better.
Are you gonna come back to BND, Kim? Is that why you said that?